Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/49countynewsTV.
Go right ahead when you get ready, sir.
Okay, sir.
Let you have the floor and handle it.
Well, I want to thank y'all again for seeing us again. We were here last time and I've got four new faces in front of me this time than we did the last time. So we didn't want to come back and visit with you again. I'm Kevin Goss, Woodbalkford. I'm Assistant Vice President of our Program Construction Management Division. And you all know Mr. Sharpless works with us. What we do is actually, in your brochure, we'll kind of give you a little headline here. Is when a system or county or whatever starts talking about a project, whether it be a courthouse, a jail, or any other type of project that you do, we'll actually come in and sit down and meet with you, help you program the type facility that there is, help you work on budgets. We're basically your liaison for the construction of a new system. Most systems don't have personnel within to look after a large construction project. We work with you on budgets, design. Like I said, we actually do the programming going in. A lot of times what happens, we have to do some initial programming to come up with the size of a project, then in turn figure out how much money you're going to have to have. What you need. Typically, you have to go out and probably chase a bond issue or something that's necessary, talk about a tax issue if needed. But we give you a target number that works with it. Within that money is not just your construction project. You have all of your soft costs. Basically, if you're looking at a jail project, you've got major security expenses that take place today and one. You have to furnish it. You've got to pay your architects, engineers, surveyors, testing agencies. And then you have to have everything for your FFND, which is fixtures, furnishes, equipment. And there again, technology is a very large factor involved with that. Some jails that we're actually working on right now, we've got a facility, new facility going on in Randolph County, which is about $11 million project. Doing one in Chambers County for about 120 inmates.
Excuse me, sir.
Yes?
How big is Randolph County?
Randolph County is about 40,000 square feet.
I mean, people.
I don't know that I can answer that question. I don't have the proper information for you on that. I'll have to get that for you and find out. Now, from what type of size jail you think you're looking at is for?
Well, that's why we want somebody to help us. We have to tell us what the population, according to population. You, Lydia, you're going to need this bigger, larger facility.
As you go forward, that's the thing too. One thing that we're doing with some of these other facilities here is they may need a total final capacity of 300 inmates. But we've only got funding at this time to build one for 200 inmates. So what we try to do is to plan on being able to build where the facility can be added on to with the infrastructure when the job's built. Going in. Chambers County wasn't about 120 inmates. It's more of a day release type center. It's not more of a full-blown medium-capacity type deal. They weren't but about $4.5 million. How about Randolph County? I apologize for that. The other one that we recently finished was in Morgan County for Ray Long, the chairman over there. We built about a $9.5 million facility over there. What Ray did there was actually, he needed more light security and they had a tremendous work release type program. And it's built right in downtown Kager. We have done a couple of presentations for Colder County. They're in dire need of a jail right now. And one thing that I had done, I'd done in Clay County, they actually purchased an old warehouse. Some of these are some options that they did. Typically, a jail is built, you've got brick and mortar, concrete, you know, steel structure. Some of the new jails that are being constructed today actually put up a metal building. And then actually use the portable cells within the size. What that does is give you the option, if you're going to plan on expanding this building at a later date, you can go ahead and put up a large enough metal building to suffice what you're going to need for, say, a 300-person capacity. But you can go ahead and finish out for just a 200 this time. It helps tremendously to me on the timing of the project because once you get your metal building up, get your roof on, you don't have any rain days anymore. It works extremely well. The general appearance of it kind of takes the jail aspect out of it. Nobody likes a jail in their neighborhood, as you all know. It's not a very popular structure, but it kind of helps outside appearance. Clay County actually did theirs down there like that. If anybody loves to tour, I would love to carry some of you down there. It worked out extremely well for them. Other counties we're working with is Cherokee County. We're actually doing some courthouses, some jails expansions over there with the. But our primary service that we have is we are hired to be your eyes and ears for your entire construction project. From the beginning of it, our main goal is to work extremely hard to try to save you our fee in what we do for you. For us to be advantageous on that is to be involved with Project Six of This.
Let me ask another question. What point in time does our fee start? You going to let us know when you quit talking to me?
Once I'm on board, what we do is we like to sit down and work your programming with you. I mean, I don't know if you're going to put committees together, what you're going to do. We'll be involved with all of those meetings. We'll help the site selection. I won't start charging you that we hire an architect, actually start putting the pencil to the paper.
No, no, whoever we agree to work with gets on.
That's right. It gives you time to, this is a very tedious decision that this commission has to make on what to do with the jail, where to put the jail, how much money you're going to spend on the jail. Everybody needs some time to think about that and really weigh it out as far as community relationships are. But we don't start charging our fee until we actually start putting the pencil to the paper.
Let me ask another question. People of jail, most people do not build a jail unless they're probably pushed by the federal government to come in at some point in time. Sorry, they take over.
That's correct.
How much time, if they know you're working on it, how much have y'all worked and got right in front of a lawsuit or something?
I have not. I'm actually talking with a system right now that the federal courts are kind of on top of and what they're hoping with us or someone starting to get involved, as long as they can see the ball start rolling in that direction, try to take some of the pressure off. I'm not guaranteeing that works, but what that does is everybody got off first base and one or another trying to go in and sign. Yeah, that does help. And that's the thread. I mean, of course, there's plenty of money out there building jails and free bond money. You wouldn't have to worry about it, you know? Because a lot of systems will let it sit and let it sit until something like the federal courts come in and make it mandatory. That's when you start scrambling. To me, that's when you, I don't know if the proper or the right decisions you make at that time because you're under a timeframe then. I think everyone here sees the immediate needs. I toured it this morning and there are some needs for a jail here. There really are.
How does the price compare to, say, you had a warehouse that you put, bring the portable?
Just the experience that I ran into in Clay County, it was an old industrial factory. The Russell Corporation used to make all the workshops down in Ashland. They vacated and went on. The county commission down there bought that warehouse for $300,000. What's so advantageous about it is a wide, open, covered building. You've got all your power there. You've got your water, all of your infrastructure. You've got acres of paved parking lot from an old factory being there. And maybe that's when inside immediately you laid the jail out of the pod situation. Really did a nice job on it. And the only way that you could tell it's a jail now is that you could see the fencing in the back where the salad court is in. Building was large enough where they actually moved the county commission office into a portion of it. Who else do they have in there? They actually going to put a courtroom in there to where it would help on the transport? That's right. Help on the transporter. I'm talking about Clay, where they went inside and redid the jail and the warehouse.
Okay, I got you.
It's great. It worked out fantastic for them. It's, it's, you can actually basically hide the jail in something of that nature. You know, if that's an issue, that you don't want to really have the general appearance of it. But there's a lot of advantageous situations being there. Like I said, there again, I've already got a structure there we're rooted on. Hardest thing you've got to do in a existing building, you've got to go in there and cut all the floors up, you know, the course, get your plumbing. That's really the hardest thing that you have to do.
So how does the price compare to the same?
Well, in that situation, that's a steal just because they bought the building and, you know, have a structure already there. Jails are running, and that's something I would want to sit down with, once we get our programming. I mean, a jail project today can run from 280 to 350 square foot now, depending on the amount of security, how much high-security, medium, release type that you put in it. That's not just the jail cost right now. All construction.
You're talking about 100?
Yes, sir.
280 dollars?
Yes, that's right. And please don't hold me to those. It's all about your programming. That gives you an idea of where I feel like they go. What we, there again, we sit down and once we get everything programmed, we will set a budget for this project. And that budget will be adhered to as long as your program does not change. And when I say by program, if I tell you that we're going to build an 80,000 square foot facility and it's going to cost you, just round numbers, say, $12 million. That's it. Now, if you come back to me and say, look, we're going to cut it to 60,000, we've got an portion that we can do. If you're going to go to 100,000, that's going to cost you more money. But you know all the time where you stay on your budget. The thing is, in y'all's position, when you go for a bond issue, whatever you're going to try to do to pay for a new jail, you need to get what you need because going back is tough. Going back is tough. So if you need the money, that's what needs to be appropriated. You need to know how much money you're going to need. You're going to need. Another thing that we do, that we really pride ourselves on, not only, when we go through this process, we oversee the construction, you move into the jail, and you typically have a one-year warranty period with the general contractor. We remain with you through that period also. We don't just abandon you once your construction's finished. But we oversee and assist at everything from buying the beds for the building to designing the capital systems. We have a lot of input. Buckets, a 95-year-old engineering firm. I have an unlimited staff of folks that actually review the documents. That was an architect. And the engineers design it to make sure it's an economical system for us to build. Another thing we like to do, I love to be involved with your site selection. You know, site selection with your infrastructure is very big as far as your water, your gas, your sanitary. Then we need to look at sites for our grading. I mean, do we want to really go out there and it's a nice level of site, that's great. You want to go spend 2 million, 2 to 3 million dollars on site work when you, that money just goes away. I don't like spending a lot of money when you don't, when it's all low grade. That doesn't help your situation with some of it. So we're heavily involved with those aspects also. I went through a lot real quick. Is there any questions?
What kind of acres are these buildings you're talking about? You just discussed what kind of acres are they?
Well, they're, they're very unique. Like in Randolph County, the county actually had property kind of on the backside of Ashland that they had had for years and they built a new road out there. It was probably 20, 30 acres that they had out there. And the one in Chambers County that I'm doing is actually in addition to their existing facility right there in downtown, behind the courthouse. And the one that I did in Morgan County, I didn't have a place about 10 times the size of this road to build a jail. And they needed like 30, about 32,000 square feet. So what I actually had to do was go a three-story structure. And this is downtown Kager, right across the street from the new performing arts center. So it had to be a pretty nice building. And when we finished it, they were building a performing arts center at that time. Our building actually to me turned out prettier than the performing arts center did. You know, there's ways to cover up a jail aspect of the structure, you know?
Would it be better, far my interruption, would it be better to have one floor or go up?
A lot of them will use, will put a high ceiling in a structure. You know, go with the two-story cells and have one pod. In fact, that one I'm talking about in Clay County actually has that. It's such a tall existing structure. They have the two-story cells. They come down. You stack your cells, therefore use your more area for a day there within. And they're actually stacked around the tower to where actually one person sits up there and can see every corner of this jail aspect, which helps the jails with salaries and personnel. Yeah, that's, that's a big player, brother. That's a big player. As far as sizes of projects that we handle, like I said, I've been doing work in Morgan County. I do all Morgan County school work. We do Madison City school work. Finished, I built the James Lemon High School that's over there. Right now, we're in Jefferson County. I've got about a $230 million building program going on there with 19 projects. So volume and size of work is not a huge issue with us. We have more personnel than we would ever need to have a project like this. We try to separate the jail people from the school people. Just because it's a jail doesn't mean it's harder to build than a school. It's just a different type of structure is all it is.
Where you was talking about a while ago, you talked about buying the building and y'all went in and built a jail inside of it?
They actually did this before I actually came in.
What's the price difference if you built the building you're talking about, then just the brick and the mortar?
What you save is your superstructure.
Right.
You've got a roof and you've got walls. So now everything that you build within this type building, number one, does not have to be of load-bearing capacity. All that's going to hold up is itself. They would come in and actually cut the slab out and build the load-bearing walls, do everything out of masonry, just like if it was a jail that was in a penthouse structure, and go up to the roof deck with everything. Save a tremendous amount of money. Their big key was they got an excellent buy-on of the building going in.
That's what you was talking about. If you didn't house 300, you could always add inside that structure
That's correct.
another 100 or 200.
Now, this one was actually built, I think they've got maybe 130 to 150 capacities, not a really large jail. But when they designed it originally, they set up all of their superstructure when they brought in all the electronics, which is huge for security. They went ahead and hit a basis for a 300-cell person facility. That way you can adapt and add on to. Hardest thing with these jails, as Sheriff could tell you, this technology changes like every six months. I mean, you can go out and spend $100,000 on technology today in six months to a year to be obsolete. So we try to regulate that. But, I mean, you can, depends on what you've got to have to start off with is the big key. How much money do you have? That's, that's the thing.
I know you had a delete. It was usually a 100-bed jail, about how many square feet does that house, 100 foot? Does it take twice as much for a 200-bed jail?
Well, you can share. Now, you don't have to duplicate. If you go in there and do your infrastructure, primarily like your common areas, your corridors, your laundry area, you know, as long as you've got room to expand it a little bit, your kitchen areas. If it takes 10,000 for 100 beds, I don't think it takes 20,000 for 200 beds, no, sir.
Do you have to have so much per inmate, how many square feet? Is that correlated to how big a jail?
They are regulated. They are regulated. The sheriff might know more about that than I do. But as far as state regulations, we never did have any quote, anyone looking over our shoulder when we're constructing these other jails. You know, typically the local systems would tell us pretty much what they want. Cells are standard size typically. If it's a two-bed cell, and then you take your quantity of cells that you stock and then you'll add probably 10 and 1/2 to 12 square feet per inmate for the day areas. That's pretty much how the calculations were. Same thing with schools, with students in schools. It's so much per inmate.
But you could take, you could take a metal building and build it.
Right inside it?
Yes, sir. So, you know, get your height there to where you could double your cells, stack your cells inside.
What I would tip, I would probably do is to take a metal building structure and put nothing less than about a 22-foot even height on. That way you get plenty of, everything's up high, everything's clear, and you can stack your cells on there as big as you can.
And then you're twice as many cells and less footage.
That's the way I see it.
I mean, that's the way I see it.
And, and the jails that I've seen that seem to be the least staffed are with those stacked cells. Because one person can actually look and keep an eye on everything that goes on right there. It works extremely well. Now, can I give you an exact square footage of what you need? Not right now. I think I need to study that some more with you, but.
If you don't mind me interrupting, what is the process that you go through to make the determination about what? I understand you said in Clay County that are to purchase the warehouse, but in the other counties, how do you go about making that determination about, here's what we need to have?
Sit down directly with the sheriff to see what, he knows what his immediate needs are. The hardest thing that it is to calculate is, all right, in five years from now, how many more beds am I going to need? Well, I don't know that anybody can ever determine that, you know? But once we sit down with him, we talk about plans, we talk about layouts, we'll come up with a square footage of area. And anytime that we do that, we always plan for expansion. You've got to plan for expansion, bro. I mean, if you drop down and he may not need, if he needs 300 beds today, two years, five years from now, he may not need 200 beds. That's kind of hard to believe, but you know, you have to.
You don't have a dime for room.
No, you don't. You don't. You don't want to. And the worst thing is like when we do a lot of these schools, the one thing that I preach is when I finally come up here and I open up your new school in six months, I don't want to be dragging, setting up trailers out back. That's public perception is not very popular. You didn't do your homework if that happened. Same thing with the jail. You wouldn't want to start a double stack the day after you open it. You have to prepare for that. There again, it's all about the money. All about the money of how much you want to spend. That's the whole key. And that's what we work very diligently on, trying to maintain your budget that we have. A lot of times they'll tell me, Kevin, I got $10 million. What can I have? I'll be honest with you and tell you, well, let's go do some bad news. That's the way we work. I mean, I'll bring bad news here, just like we bring good news. During this whole process, I actually come in here once a month and make a presentation to you. We're in design stages. I give you updates on designs. We're in construction stages. I tell you where we are in construction. How much money have you, how much of your money have we spent? How much you got left? I do a lot of, in our program, we have a system called E-Builder, which myself, the owner, if you like, architects, and the contractor own this computer-based program. Everybody knows what goes on every day on that project. I don't lose 10 days of construction time due to a structural spill, some metal being sitting out here because it won't get off a guy's desk. Clock's ticking on everything. We create a master schedule from the day that we come up here and start our meetings and design, the day we hire the architect, the architect is put on the schedule just like us as a contractor. It even gives the dates of when we've got to order your furniture for you and have it delivered and lets him know when he can move in his building. So it's, I'm throwing a lot at you real quick. But we, we work hard for you. We are a very honest firm. You're welcome to check us out with any other county that we work with. And we just try to do the right thing. And we are more than self-conscious about the money involved. Because nobody likes spending money on a jail. I see that. I will state that. But it's, but it's a necessity that has to happen.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
You got a printing press upstairs that prints money, don't you?
Oh, yeah.
Once you, you and the sheriff get together and reach a kind of a number type of thing, how many inmates you want to apply for, how many you want to construct for, and other things that you consider with it, you're going to get you a budget put together. You know, this is where you're aiming to spend this much money and that's what you're going to. Y'all don't have to borrow money, I'm sure, but that was a joke.
Oh, well.
No, they've got money.
But y'all are going to have to talk money at some time and figure out how you can pay for it. And these guys will keep you in the budget.
Or who you talk money with, saying, you all, how do most people finance these jails?
Well, I'm assuming you go after a bond issue. We did. We know several of the bond brokers that are around the state that could probably help. Be interesting.
What do they go through, bond paper or y'all don't handle?
We don't handle any of that, though, so we don't do the financial end of it. You know, of course, you know how that works. They look at your indebtedness that you have right now and give you, you know, your rating. And then your rating determines the percentage of what you pay for your bonds. Bonds are still fairly reasonable right now, from what I understand.
What percentage are they?
I think the last one that I heard in Tallahassee was might have been like 3.7, something of that nature. Does that sound about right? I don't do a lot of the financial end, but that's. I was with one of the bondy guys last Thursday evening and I think it was 373 or something of that nature. And there again, it's dependent on if you're an A-rating, a W-A rating, AAA rating, all sorts of that. And it goes against, you know, checking, the checks are created for to give you bonds. Same thing as if you borrow money on your own. So, I mean, it's a step. Like I said, we're the most successful is getting early, is involved as we can. I know y'all have a lot of in-house discussions to have amongst yourselves and we'd love to be involved with the project. I'd love to come in as soon as y'all start sitting down and say, Kevin, this is what we got. This is what we want. What's going on? And we can all go to work for you. Sheriff, you look.
Anyone else have any more questions? We appreciate you having us.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all very much.
Let me give you a copy of our numbers.
We got 100.
It's a problem with old buildings in this place. All the buildings are old.
What?
Uh, garbage man or something like that with old ceilings. I don't know.
What?
Uh, buildings.
What would be bags?
Somebody's going to let that one.
Yeah, I'm going to tell you. Well, we were looking at the jail and wanted to clarify with you a few minutes later.
Your county goes, is the security of the cell?
I play scared music. I know it's, it's tough on you. Y'all are doing your turn. Obviously, he's familiar with things like this, but you guys are going to face this, but it's.
That's the population, so if you have 100, do something. You have the dream, I hope.
Wish you good luck.
Would you proportionate it to here?
We're pretty close to getting out of there for you.
Yeah, I mean.
A little bit.
Typically, that's the least now.
Severn County where it's pretty good.
Most of these are going to be most of them will be medium as far as you draw a crime.
I know very little about setting prices. You're talking millions of dollars.
I got you.
That's the idea.
It'd be like 60, 20, 20?
Yeah, something like that.
What's the worst? Is the state is doing things, making any difference. Hell, it's not as far as.
What this will do is give me a cap for sale.
800 million dollars.
The square foot.
Bill, the state's going to be.
Yes, it'll take any pressure off the counties, I'm sure.
What if it's 10,000?
They'll be mega prisons.
20,000, 30,000.
Take prisons there, so.
You know, the commentators. That's good. This would be very.
Everybody tells me this is, they use mega prison labels. Nobody wants to turn this on. They don't want to get them. And they're such an attribute to the county that is put in. Nobody wants, I mean.
Female if you have 100.
It's tough. You build in your area.
Versus, so.
Leave like they in. They don't know. He's not keen on that idea.
Well, I mean, it's the same thing as the warehouse. It's the same thing.
We just did programming. That's called.
There you go.
It will, definitely. And I'll start doing a little homework.
That's me, we met down.
Yeah. How long would you use our, was y'all gonna see you a while?
Yeah.
Well, about thirty-five years.
Get our, get our substructure ready.
About thirty-six and a half.
Okay. Great.
Good to see y'all.
Good to see you, bud. Appreciate you down.
Hey, it's my pleasure, sir.
Jimmy, this is the lady.
Thank y'all again.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
On the jail, I'm sure you have your own names.
I'm gonna give you a card.
We got a hundred seventy-two.
I think I hook every morning.
I should, I should hook you on, uh, the, uh, hinges post down there with the hand gush.
All in the floor.
Yeah, that's the floor.
Y'all need to come visit down here for jail. Take a look at what we have and how we do. No, they'll have a little break.
No, for work, over.
This is a breakdown of what we have, as far as, as far as occasions, not all occasions.
Mr. Burlesbury, if I can, uh, sign if the press has a copy of what I can.
No, 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 no. Yeah, we're trying to be craft first.
Very much.
We gotta be good.
How about this here?
I thought I was fixing to ask you. You got twenty-five state inmates, or did at the end of the month?
Yes.
Yes, and, and the state has been really good as far as getting them out, calling, they're a little bit slow right now. Uh, we're gonna make a phone call and see if we can hurry up and get some of these extradited out. Uh, the problem we have is, if you look at the list, you've got city inmates, there's a hundred and twelve there, that's, they're there for fines, or traffic fines and stuff, and their courts don't wanna release them. Uh, I had more than this, but one year in county jails, there's three, that's where the, the presiding circuit judge has, has sentenced these people to one year in the county jail. If you get sentenced to one year in a day, you go to prison, but these are one year in the county jail. Our circuit judges really, uh, been trying to help me with that, not put anybody in there on that one year, but I'm stuck with them for one year. And of course, you drug crimes, that's the majority of what we deal with. Uh, the circuit court alias, if you look at that number, that's where people has been charged with a felony, they go to court. They haven't showed up for court, the judge has issued an alias, the judge is on it, and they can release them. Uh, so there's stuff we need to the next term in court, or unless the circuit judge wants to release them. I'm meeting with the circuit court judges, uh, probably tomorrow, at least, Judge Burden, to find out how many days we can let out right now. Probation violators, that's the people that's been through the system more than once. It's usually four or five times, they go on probation, they keep messing up, they come back to us, eventually they will be out. That's about it, the state, you know, in prison, basically, but right now, they're with us. Uh, community corrections violations, the same thing, a state probation officer or state foundation court, uh, their own probation through the community corrections system, and they, um, you know, they don't comply for the rules either, so that's, that's who, that's, that's, that's basically it. Revoked bonds, that's where people have been in jail, they've made bond, uh, they violated, got caught again, violated conditions of bonds, so they put back in there and they revoked the bond, the judge revokes the bond, so they're stuck with me. Um, of course, you can see I got ten murder, attempted murder people in the county jail. But it's good. Bob?
What, what federal is this backseat over here? How long did this female, it, when, when I first came here, a woman, lady got in prison or in jail, that was.
It was awful.
That was not what we knew.
Well, I was telling the gentleman that left, we were late, 'cause they were there at the jail tour, and.
We didn't even have, we didn't even have room for them down there.
Well, when I started my career in nineteen ninety-two, if we had one or two females, we had two men.
Yeah, we had to take the inmate office to make room for them.
And, and that's what we have now. And my numbers today is forty-two females. Uh, we got one female that's seven and a half month pregnant with twins, has been on meth. And the nurse is begging me to let her go, the judge don't wanna let her go, 'cause if we let her go, she's gonna get back out there and do meth, she's gonna kill the babies, and this is irresponsible.
We'll pay for the delivery.
We, but Kevin, if, more than likely, we'll have to.
Still, you, the moral thing does.
It's the moral of the thing to do, Mr. Bob, you said. I hate it, this business that I'm in, we're in. I don't know what else to do, guys. Um, I just thought we'd break down what we have, and the day's population was a hundred and seventy-three when I got there, so we got one out, a hundred and seventy-two. We carried nine to court, and I haven't had a chance to check on court, see if anyone else got, has gotten out. Uh, the ones that we have in jail right now really can't bond. But, believe me, I, I've tried to look out from my back and your back too, as far as letting these people come and go as they please, pretty much. If you get arrested and they bond out quick, but they're coming right back, guys. They're coming right back. And, uh, there's only so much I can do.
I know you've tried several things, bet some locked doors on some of them, as far as out inmates, paid part of their own. Uh, we provide exhausted things to try to, you know, make them, uh, if they get in, make them pay, which that's, that's, that's not a, uh, that's not a way to fund a jail, it's not.
It's not. The majority of them are, a lot of them are injured, can't afford anything, doesn't have anything. And, uh, you get restitution through court, if you lucky, you get it out of court, restitution. And that's some of these, well, look, one of these favored to pay, that's what that is. You know, your hands are tied, uh, court systems. You know, I don't know what to tell you. I appreciate y'all willing to look at a new facility of some type. I'm willing to help you in any way we can. Uh, I, I think we need three hundred beds. If I had three hundred beds, I know we'd have two hundred beds. Now, if you build a system that, like Keith's talking about, that you didn't have to activate or use it at that time, but later on you could, uh, 'cause you got to build for the future. You know, when I started sixteen, almost seventeen years ago with sheriff, it wasn't near this bad, but it is now. And I don't know what it's gonna, gonna be like in the future.
Well, it's something you don't, it's, you don't want to plan for the future of incarceration, but, but it's a, it's a fact of life.
I know. I talked to, uh, Commissioner in Winston County, uh, Roger Hayes, when they built their new jail. He said, it doesn't matter how big you build it, when you build it, it ain't gonna be big enough, 'cause it's just the way.
It's like building dreams, you build it, never come.
That's kinda what it is.
Well, that, you know, like with a metal building, building it twenty-two foot like that, it don't cost that much more to build a lot bigger building from the beginning.
Right.
You know, even though you don't need it all, and I mean, when you're double stacking, that's, that's my opinion, I mean.
See, the, the concept, and I wanted, it's called a pod system.
Yeah.
It's basically what he described to you, and it would be nice, because number one, I'm, I'm gonna lie to you, I'm understaffed at the jail, but when you build a pod system, it takes less stacking.
Yeah.
Because you got that one cube setting up high, and it's controlled all the way around by one person, maybe two people. You know, that's, that's, that's the idea. The problem we have, I'll be honest with you, and I talked to, discussed it, they asked me about monies. I don't know your monies, our money, money situation, but I said, you know, we don't have any money. So your revenue is where you're gonna have to find it. Now, where are you gonna find revenue unless you raise a tax or get a new industry?
You gotta have an outside source.
You gotta have an outside source or something. I, I get that, but I'm to the point, we gotta do something.
Yeah.
We have, New York County has to do something.
Well, that's why I wondered if, you know, you probably, I don't know if you got here, if we're in the process, how long do people hold off on, instead of way of making the federal courts, if, if we're in the process, how long they wait on us, at least?
I don't know the answer to that. Uh, I think my understanding of, of laws and things, as long as you, like documentation, as long as you try and you're doing this, then it really helps you.
As long as you're doing all you can do, I mean, that's.
Yes, yes, yes. The federal judges and things looks at that. It's just like today, meeting today, this is one step that would help us in the future.
Yeah, well, it seems like we are first step is finding the place.
Yes, sir, the location.
How many acres do you think you're gonna need?
I'd like to have twenty, probably, at least. I don't know.
Is that on highway two, is to drop off, or?
As far as I know, yes. And just like he said, the site location means everything for those of you, if you're gonna spend two million dollars to build it up, you know how we built that, at the jail, you know, we had to dig down so far, you remember that?
I remember well.
Because it's a swamp.
Yeah, it's a swamp.
So you spend an extra money that you don't need to, so site preparation and everything. Uh, and in a jail situation, you've got to have sewer.
I was gonna say, it's got to be.
Some jails have their own, they call it a nickname, a grind or something.
Yeah, grinder syst, grinder system.
Yes.
But you're looking, there you're looking at another million dollars for sewer system.
Five hundred thousand dollars is what I was told, just for the grinding system. Uh, 'cause you know what, right now, we've had a problem in IJL, everybody flushing everything down the sewer, and it clogs up everything. It's just the way they are.
Well, you can't build one without being on city sewer, you know, I mean.
We have, we have, well, thirty-five acre, but it's not suitable for you, and we, it would be very, it wouldn't be agitation fuel at all. I don't think. I mean, transportation, and there's the treatment, I mean, the asphalt plan, but that's not a, that's really not a.
Not really, uh.
Unless you build.
One of my main concerns is transportation that we're doing now.
Yeah.
Uh, like I told the gentleman when he was at the jail, we only had nine today in district court, but in circuit court, we'll have twenty to thirty that we haven't transported back and forth, and so far, we just, we haven't had any since, but you run into that, don't worry about that. So I wanna be somewhere adjacent here, close to courthouse. Now, where, I don't know.
As we talked before with Old Munch, Wharside is.
Old Munch, Wharside would be perfect, in my opinion.
It'd take more to clean it up.
Would you hear, Kevin, when the guy was talking about the, uh, when we built, if you built the metal building with a structure?
Uh-huh.
That, uh, you could build whatever what you needed, size-wise, on that, and then he said some of the counties that he had done that, they had brought a room into that for a courtroom.
Mm-hmm.
Get your, have you, I hadn't thought of that, but, you know, you could fix a courtroom in that and bring the judge to do it in-house.
See, at one time.
Would that save a lot of money?
Yes, at one time, when we first kinda talked about this, it's kinda like a jail plus a judicial building, a judicial building. With it, in it, or next to it, or something, with, same kinda thing, but.
That's what he was talking about, if you build it big enough, that you could build one in the corner, or corner of it, and then later on, if you was housing three hundred, you needed four hundred, the, the structure over it would done be there.
That's what I say.
See, Bob and I have talked about that years ago, we talked about the metal building and building within it, 'cause at one time, they were building cells right here in Hamilton, all that.
That would save the county a lot of money if they had, if you built a courtroom in that, and you could just walk them out, walk them down the hall, and say, this is it, and then you do the court.
See, we have a lot of judges now, uh, circuit clerk was doing it, but now the judges are doing it, they're having to come to the jail and do bond hearings.
Right.
Initial bond hearings, so the circuit court judges are doing it, and district court judges are doing it, so that, too.
I think land would be much cheaper than, uh, building a structure. I mean, in other words, even though you got thirty-five acre down there, it'd be, it, it, uh, you wouldn't save any money by having the land. If you had to go in and build a judicial building, it's going along with that, you, you'd come better off to, you save the safety part out. I mean, if you put judicial building, it'd take away the transport.
Right.
But still, the, uh, you can buy land cheaper than you can a building.
Sure.
But I hadn't looked at that land down there, but.
I haven't either.
I mean, you take your Fitz's aisle, and Fitz's just a big hollow, it's gonna cost you more.
It's flat land, but it falls off, it's where our land is in. I mean, you can drop six feet.
Then again, there you are about sewer out there.
Well, they've got sewer across the interstate down there, they got a grinder with a pump.
Well, they tore the jail, they were amazed, off the ref him up. They weren't out of.
What about the old hangar at the airport? The ones that have been remodeled.
I don't think it's paying up.
You like?
Hey, you turned it on, hey, you. I said, don't mute, I mean, I can't turn it off, I just, I can't mute and turn it off.
Pretty big. I'm not talking about the one I'm getting, I'm talking about the other one. 'Cause I, the same man, I, what I, to build a district shop, I can get this and tore down, cut by cut. With this side, eighty, cheaper, if I, I mean, I could build a forty, forty, a forty for forty, for the same price. I'm getting half another building.
I don't know.
Have you thought about the property behind, right beside the, uh, D H R?
Yeah, there's nothing that's coming down.
The, uh, industrial very end?
Yes, I, I've thought about the industrial park over there, by the D H R and the big open.
That'd be a good.
I haven't met with the mayor or council about any of that property, um.
They're never gonna put a buil, a business back there, they're gonna have it.
You wouldn't think so, but.
Not, not since they got the brand new one down here, is what I'm saying. That one's probably gonna kinda fall to the wayside.
So the city, state, and federal doesn't have to help when it's built, and it's.
No. It's all on your shoulders.
Even though we put a house in, like.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. You know, we just started charging more of a, or, or actually a housing fee for all the cities, a few years ago, commission did. And they pitched a fit about it, but. The federal inmates. I wouldn't mind housing some point in time with the federal inmates to get a federal contract. It's just gonna cost us a little more money to get started, because you have to provide security for them, you have to be, I'd have to be carrying them back and forth to court, and they, they require two deputies on indebtedness every time they're transported to court, and court for us would be Birmingham, Tuscaloosa, or Huntsville. But, a lot of counties got contracts with the, who, who the feds, and the, the one guy that I talked to earlier said they sold, they sold them up for about fifty dollars a night, fifty dollars a day.
That was somebody we talked to at Montgomery, one of those meetings, that they, their county was housing them.
Yes, and that's how you can recuperate a lot of your money, make a bond payment with those, but housing feds get this, and it's got no certain requirements. And right now, my jail's not required, I can't do it, and I don't have enough manpower, too, so it's something we look at in the future.
Yeah.
'Cause that money'd help pay for extra help, too, not just ridiculous out of our pocket. So, I've, I've looked in that aspect, Bob.
You got to go and leave. I don't leave now for that. Well, I got it turned off. A little red button's going.
You hadn't helped to know the city about any of their land, like you've been to Moxomire or over to.
I have not, I have not.
Thing is, uh, you can find land, but it's having the sewer and the water and all of that, so. I talked, I talked to you earlier about, you know, about some land, but, um, need to do.
I mean, I'm not particular, I'm not picky about where we're trying to do this, I just, we just need to make sure it's accessible as far as utilities go. That's number one. If not, you're gonna be in extra, a lot of extra money.
Lot of extra money, yeah.
But I don't, we don't have a star.
And it makes a lot of sense, too, where you, where you gotta go digging if the ground's not solid, you gotta go fill in, and then plus, if you got rolling hills, you gotta take one to fill a hollow, a lot of money invested in.
We did that when we built that new office. We did. I forgot how deep it was on one end.
Those are all part of why we wanted to get these people in here first, get the voces, contractors, these next, or architects, the ones we're gonna meet with next Monday, so they can work with the sheriff and get those kinda concepts taken care of first, so we can work on sites. So I was just going out there thinking, this might be a good spot, that might be a good spot, good people that know what we need.
Well, just like Kevin, what you said, you know, he would like to be this, if they got it, he would like to be in on the selection of the site, I think, you know, that just.
And we'd like for that.
It's easier on us than them, too.
'Cause if they can tell us what we're looking for with, we can go out and get the land, I mean, that, you know, we can figure out where that might need to be.
At some point, I don't know how the process works, Scott, but I learned from another county, I won't tell you who it is, they didn't have a project manager when they go to jail, and they really got ripped, and a lot of their issues.
Yeah, I sure wouldn't wanna be.
No, 'cause you don't have time as a chairman. I don't have time for my job.
Well, I don't have then, I don't have the knowledge.
I don't have the talent to see.
Well, that's why, like he said, our sheriff is the one that knows what we need at the jail. But I'm gonna go out on a limb and say you can't build one.
No.
And so we gotta, we gotta have somebody that can handle all that, and get everybody in the right room, and get.
Yeah.
Who can tell us what land is available here in, uh, only within the sewer line of, of sewer and, uh, of water system, of, of. You wanted in the city limits, was, I mean, city limits goes out pretty far, it is.
Far. The county rope, too, may be in some.
Sure.
County rope, too, maybe.
Probably has to be in the city limits, and we gotta have all of you too, this one day.
The mayor's, they have a favor for some of the city council, probably have.
But the coun, the council, we, we know what the city's land is, what the city owns, that could possibly be available, but then, you know, as far as privately owned property, who knows what that may be.
Is it a city-owned land that would be suitable?
I mean, again, depending upon what, what might actually be needed, with the city-owned property, it's gonna be limited, it's gonna be, you know, like you said, out of Bedford Industrial Park, it's gonna be the. It's gonna be the much more property. The city just spent a lot of money, I mean, getting that, uh, level.
More likely they would be, and that does have a little much more property.
I think it's fair to say with that Montbetta sale, I mean, they spent a million dollars on it, they're probably gonna wanna do something else with it. But, um, but you got the Bedford property. And maybe some smaller.
Did you work out a deal, barter with them some way, know where we, we'll have your inmates free certainly in the stands or, uh, free land or whatever? You know, one time, you and I had free garbage pickup, we put the, uh, transfer station where they wanted, but we didn't choose to do that, so.
Well, like Sheriff said, it, it needs to be someplace that's convenient, um, or. Like you mentioned and Keith brought up about having a courtroom there to, to handle a lot of the minor proceedings that they can maybe, I was gonna say knock out some of these persons, that's probably not the best terminology, but to get them in and out easier. But that need to be fairly close.
How, in your estimation, how, how much would, how much conflict would we run into with the city, uh, building, moving to jail? I mean, and I guess we got four down there, uh, and so, I mean, they're all around them, you know, you wouldn't think that would that be a, uh, obviously, well, you'd have to come over, uh, you know, nobody wants it in their neighborhood.
I think so.
It would.
I think so.
There always gonna, we got somebody that's gonna object to it.
Well, no one wants a jail in their backyard, but in Hamilton, I mean, we've got one next to our board education, we got one in the heart of the commercial district. We got one basically rock across the street there from Bedford Industrial Park, I mean, people are somewhat used to it.
I still think you would have some opposition.
Well, I'm going out, no doubt about that some, but not, uh, not rural. They tell me that these fed big jails that people don't want until they get them, then you can't take them away from them, cause it's such an economic boon to the, the cities that you're building there.
They want us, don't put them in my neighborhood, it's what, use it as what it is, you know.
The problem with a super or a prison in Marion County would be the same problem we have now. A lot of lawsuits and a lot of things are filed through our circuit clerk office, through our court system. That we have, and it kinda floods our DA, the court system down with it, because it's housed here and a lot of paperwork and lawsuits are being filed here. Through the prison system, up in the cert, in the cert clerk system.
Well, Scott, what would you say our next step is, do we need to meet with the cities, see if they have any land available or, or meet with them, possibility of, of the, uh, much more parking, uh, parks?
Well, I think.
Or, or how we, what's, are we gonna?
I think we need to work on getting someone to handle the project for us, to handle the, the project manager, architect, get someone in that framework to help us with that. We can meet with the city at any time and get an idea, or get their temperature as to what land might be available that we could, we could get reasonably.
They may not want, have any, they won't get rid of.
Exactly.
Do we, do we need to get a firm to represent us, uh, evening on?
I, I believe.
This, this early, but we've been eating that.
Well, I believe, I guess your decision is, is do we want to look into this? Because that's really what's going on, because we gotta figure out, before we can get to the backend about money, which is always gonna be the most important thing, we gotta figure out what we need.
That's true.
And so we gotta figure out, and the only way we can do that is really by getting somebody on board, like, uh, I never caught that guy's name, but.
Kevin.
Kevin.
And now you remember.
We might need to.
Yeah, but, you know, so that they can get on board, get, see what our needs are and say, okay, here's the size of facility that you're gonna need, and here's roughly what that's gonna cost. To get some idea about what kinda money we're gonna need, because before we can go, and we can go on the bond market and, and we can go to federal sources and state sources. But before we can do all that, we need to have a firm plan about, here's exactly what we're gonna build, here's where we're gonna build it, and here's the inmates that we're gonna have. Here's what we're gonna plan for in the future, because if we have that plan, it'll make getting money so much easier. If we don't have that plan, we're not gonna get a dollar.
They're just gonna life that us.
But, if you bring those people on board, they're on your payroll, how much are you gonna be able to, uh, before you get a, a bond issue or know how you're gonna fund a bond issue? How much are you gonna put yourself in jeopardy of, of the county?
Your biggest expense upfront will be when you hire someone like, say, Volker, like if y'all hired him, whatever that initial cost would be to get a plan together, or get an architect in to get a plan together. To give us some preliminary plans where we can go forward. After that, all the other stuff would be speculative, as far as, uh, talking with bond people and getting them on board, there wouldn't be costs there until we actually did something. But the biggest cost upfront would be if you hired Volker or you hired an architect upfront, but we're gonna have to have that. If we're, if we're gonna be serious about getting a jail, we're gonna have to have somebody to tell us what we need. That's what I, Sheriff and I can sit here and we can doodle and draw out a sketch about what we want, want, and he, and Sheriff knows exactly what he needs. He's been doing this a long time, but getting it.
We've got to have somebody that can put a dollar amount with it when we figure out what we need.
To handle all these things that we're not.
We have somebody else out there wanna talk to us.
And what Bobby was saying about the cost efficient, if I understood Kevin right, he said it wouldn't cost us nothing, he would spend time helping us plan and find the land and giving his opinion on it till we signed. To hire the, uh, who we needed to draw it up or whatever, you know. If I understood him right, on that part of it, for him to give his idea, but now that ain't gonna be good if he comes out here and spends a week or two and gives us all ideas and picks land and helps and says this is what you need, then we're going to have enough firm to do it. You know what I'm saying? But now he's the one that said that they would do that and help us with that and make the decision.
And most would probably do something like that, you know, to y'all to make the firm decisions about what you need.
Okay.
Good evening, how are you ma'am?
Good evening, Jim.
Come right in.
This is Andrea Clement, she's a local girl.
Yes.
She's gonna talk to you.
Thank God, leave to you, um, can I borrow this chair? Thank you all very much for allowing me to opportunity to speak with you about your upcoming project and your plans to improve the conditions at our local jail and county facilities. I have, um, two handouts I want to give to you. This one is, um, kind of a summary about myself and the way I put together teams for my projects. And a few of those people I wanted to talk about in detail. Generally speaking, I think, um, am I supposed to stand in a certain location?
No, please.
As you see, um, as an architect, we typically put together a design team and then work with the owner and the departments or the commissioners, as it is here. To, uh, go through the different stages of development for that project. And I've listed those, there are needs assessment program, schematic, preliminary, design development, construction documents, and contract administration. And as a team works through each of these and listens to the feedback from you all and from those who work in the facility, even from the community. They can better design the facility to meet your needs. The, um, as in any project, we always are aware of standards, in this case, ACA standards, international building code, life safety, fire code. And all of those are very unique to this project, and so, um, those would be implemented also. The team I have worked with on previous projects in this area are familiar with all those elements. They're also familiar with industrial and institutional type of construction. They have, uh, varied backgrounds, I can provide all those resumes to you if needed. But today, I'm going to focus on two consultants that I would like to work with on this project, and they are Lynn Wickie and Mark Goldman. And let's see, let me get those out. These are gentlemen who have proven to be. Skilled in the, the design of jails and detention facilities, and I am providing you, um, information. On their experience, their work experience spans thirty years or more. And they are excited and hopeful that they'll get a chance to help you with the project. I don't know where you are in planning or assessing your needs.
Ground floor.
Ground floor, okay, excellent, that is the best way to start, because these gentlemen, after I've met with them several times. Have ways of helping you to know how to manage your spaces, how to build your units. The beds in such a way that you're not putting more security there than is needed, which also equals cost. And how there are some options that you can have, different arrangements that might work with your programs from the court system and different, uh, things that would help your facility. Relate to what your actual population is coming in for and that sort of thing. So, um, like I said, they would look at your bed count and types of programming that you have going on. I did get to share with them about our drug court system and how that works and how, you know, they're processed through that. And, um, so I think if you can, I wasn't gonna go into detail, I think these documents will show you where they're coming from, and they wanted me to tell you today that they can come immediately, so they're voted. And they will not mind coming here as many times as you need for them to discuss or go over documentation or gather information. I can foresee that I would be the one to kinda get information together from you all, or maybe have preliminary meetings and then have them come in. And give us their suggestions and ideas to improve your facility or your plans for your facility. Um, I wasn't sure if this was a renovation or a new facility, but, um, that was some of the things we had discussed. Another name I've mentioned here is Steve Scalco, he's worked with me on all of my projects. He's a former building inspector and has worked with the IBC in developing their codes, so he is always someone I like to have involved in my projects to help make sure we're meeting all of those requirements. And I also will include the, the standard civil, structural, mechanical, plumbing, and electrical engineers as required as that, as we get to that point. Uh, initially, the, um, I think a lot of weight should be put on that needs assessment and preliminary design, because it affects the cost down the road. And it affects the programs, and I know they were even talking about things that are options to get funding. That include if you offer programmatic things in that facility, that might open some doors for some additional funding. I know we don't have a rehab center within a large radius of Hamilton or the Marion County area, so I don't know if, you know, there's some way to work with some entity to, um. You know, they were looking at that option also, it's something that you might consider. And, um, the, um, or at least try to work your programs so that they work well with those entities. If and when we get one nearby, or if we're still, you know, having to go long distance for that. The second page kinda tells you a little about me and my past projects, which I think most of you might be familiar with. Primarily since moving to Hamilton, I've worked in the Hamilton area or North Alabama. Um, the major projects have been renovation of City Hall and the Nature Trails Flash Park and Playground. And then we are now working on the recreational renovation project, we're in contract administration on that, so. I've enjoyed working in this area, it's my home, and, um, I've enjoyed, you know, being able to meet with the clients, figure out their best program. And try to fit the program to their needs and do that, um, in a timely fashion. The, um, structural, mechanical, plumbing, electrical, and civil are listed there. These are not all of them that I would choose from, but these are some that I have worked with that are qualified. The close proximity of my firm, three miles or ten minutes from here, makes it easy for me to be available to you all at any time. And that's both during preliminary design and during construction. So, um. The next page kind of goes into more detail about, um, the different phases I was speaking about. In the needs assessment, these gentlemen would come in and help us to, um, look at your population of inmates and what their offenses are and. What that profile is and how best to provide the security needed for that. And also, they will assess your staff and how, how that is working presently and how it might work better in the future. The, um, staffing and overseeing the inmates, um, is a very crucial item, both in safety and in cost. If you can design your facility so that you can have less staff, then your cost will go down over the years' time. And so that's one element that I'm glad you're not deep into a floor plan yet and can look at those options. So, um, the programmatic, once the programmatic needs are addressed and looked at. Then I believe at the same time, you're looking at your funding and different options there and, uh, generating a budget. And at that time, you move into preliminary and design development and onto the construction documents. So, um, this project would be reviewed at the Alabama Building Commission, and that would happen at a preliminary point in the project and also at the final. And that would have to happen before it goes out to bid. I would assist you in advertising statewide bids, I know y'all are familiar with all of that, but, um, that is something that would be done. The fees would be based on the fee schedule by the Alabama Building Commission, and on the next page, you'll see some of the items included in that basic fee and some items that are additional, if they're required. This is the general idea, for instance, I am capable, if you want to have a three D model of your jail and have a walkthrough of it, you've seen the wire diagrams where you can kinda walk through and see. Those can be done, but they are expensive, and, um, three D renderings can be done, um, you know, but they're available through the, the consultants that I use, so. That's, the, um, the last two pages are basically my resume, showing my school experience, my work experience, my registrations. I'm both an Alabama and a Florida architect, and I'm registered with the National, um, Council of Architectural Registration Boards. And keep all of that current with continuing education. I'm a member of the American Institute of Architects, and I have worked on disaster assistant teams, for instance, in, um, Tuscaloosa. We went in to assess buildings under the Good Samaritan law for, um, after the big tornadoes. And helped them to kind of assess what buildings are not to be occupied due to structural damage. And, uh, I kinda am a point person for the AIA up in this area, if things happen, they'll call me and we'll kinda get the word out that we can provide that service. But, um, civic organizations, the local, uh, organizations, and I have been assisting people get pro- properties listed on the historical register. The old jail would have been a candidate for that. Do y'all remember the old jail, if anyone?
Pictures.
Just pictures, I remember taking a tour there in school, so, um. And the next page of my resume basically is a summary of my work experience and different facets of different jobs that I've been, uh, involved with. And I've listed references that most of you will know, who I have worked with on small or large projects and, uh, have agreed to be my references, so. That may be a quick and simple presentation, but, um, do you have any questions for me? Or anything that I might can answer about my company and how I'm organized, or these people that I recommend, that I've been. Or these people that I recommend that I've been researching their credentials on? And they've even said if I want to call them from this meeting, they'll speak to you directly. It was short notice for them, they both had, they were out of town this week, so I couldn't get them here, or they would have been here. I'll, I'll be happy to get more information if you find you need it.
Well, I, I think there's some basic groundwork we gotta agree on pretty, I mean, you know, the, the site locations and size, size facility.
Right.
And, uh, so.
Have you got documentation of kind of the past four or five years? What has been the load in the jail?
Oh, yeah, he has all of that, no.
You have all that? And they were asking me that and I, I had seen things in the paper and I kinda went from what I knew from just general information. And, um, as far as the site, uh, I remember speaking with them about that. They said it's always good to keep the public informed about where this is going and that this is a, a positive thing for the community and for the county. Because the better secure and the more secure your jail is, the more safety they can enjoy. And, you know, it's really something that's important. And not every project, I do affect every person in the county, but this one does.
True.
So, um, I think everyone has an interest in what you're doing and what you're gonna do. And the site location is important too.
We all have family members that's been in there too.
I, I agree. And I'm not set.
So, you know, but this right here, this was January's totals that we have.
Oh my.
And the number today, this was the day in, is one seventy-two today, so it's on the rise. This is the burning dam of classic Kinston, that's what we house. Cause I tell people, we house the worst of the worst, so they're just a simple track.
Simple.
Visions, yes.
Well, I had looked online and seen some listed, but I couldn't really tell the general amounts. Thank you.
That may help you, maybe. And I, I don't know.
Well, it does.
Contact me or.
Okay.
They, you think.
Okay.
We'll get you whatever. We keep, we keep an average of this.
So this is the total that came through?
Yes, three hundred and sixty-six inmates came through this January.
And they did want to know about the females and, and juveniles, how those were processed through the jail.
Juvenile.
Juvenile or.
They're not.
We don't house juveniles in the statewide federal one. Uh, females don't rise. We, it's, it's, it's about thirty-five percent of my population, though, just people.
Are your facilities geared for the separation? No, okay.
No, no.
And.
They are not.
And do you have to coordinate with other counties or other jails when they're overpopulated? Is there any kind of inner action they ask me about that often?
Yes, yes, we have, um, Walker County is the best county that we work with. They send us some, we send them some. Franklin County is helps some of ours before. In fact, I'm fixing to reach out to some of those counties and see. But the ones I have in jail right now can't bond.
Okay.
Most of them, majority of them cannot bond, so. And I have eighty-six beds.
And your staff, they were asking me, I looked online about the number of staff that you have, do you have that on here?
No, no, but I can tell you, we have seven jails, is all we have.
That's what we thought, that's what I could figure out from the, I was hoping that wasn't, okay. They have a big job.
They have a huge tremendous job. And our dispatchers work as matrons and dispatchers too. So the females are monitored by camera system that we have.
Okay.
And then during the day, my, my gentleman secretary's a female. And then my booking clerk is a female. So during the day, while they're in there at five o'clock, they have to take care of the female inmates. But after five, the dispatcher has to shut down ready or walk over there and take care of them. And they monitor them at night through the camera system. That's why I said I'm understaffed.
What about sickness and illness or late transport between hospital, how is that?
We have a nurse that's there Monday through Friday, eight to five, and she's on call nights and weekends. Most of ours is not taken outside. You know, we in the contract, we have offsite care in the jail. Uh, but one inmate certainly blew that, that price. As far as taking back and forth to doctors, we do when we have to. Most of it can be done or has been done to the jail, through the nursing staff.
They come there.
And the doctors come twice a week.
And you have facilities there, an area that's.
Yes, I have a small cell area that we made into a doctor's office. That's what, they do that there.
I've never been in this.
You need to come to it.
Thankfully, I've never had to be there.
Thank you, we appreciate you coming by and that'll make it.
All right. Well, if there's any, you need any more information, let me, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it, all I have to say.
Some understanding of the first group, Volker's.
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com backslash forty-nine county news TV.